I missed mine.
Yeah, it's six o'clock, so we'll get started. Thank you all for joining the January 5th Lewisville City Council meeting and Happy New Year. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. Attendees calling in can dial *9 on their phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmutes you, you'll need to state your name, your address, and your question of concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll just need to raise your hand again. Thank you for helping us to maintain meeting decorum by following these directions. City Clerk News, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Thank you, everyone. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a couple more people to participate.
Yes, aye.
All right. Thank you. All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. That takes us to public comments on items not on the agenda and comments that the public has on the consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment on those items, go ahead and raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, that takes us back to our council agenda to the consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Brown. Any discussion of the consent agenda from council members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. That takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. I hope everyone saw the mayor's message that went out. There are some updates to the vaccination plan that are very exciting for our community. The governor has added adults over 70 to earlier phase, and so as soon as we have more information, we'll get it posted as prominently as possible on the city website so that we can get as many residents that are at the highest risk of hospitalization vaccinated as soon as possible. And that really could help us change the course of things for the spring and help the business community and help all of our residents stay healthier. So we look forward to getting that out to you as soon as we can. And there's a link in that mayor's message for people to sign up for notification from county health so that they know when they'll be eligible to get a vaccine and they can get information that way as well. So hopefully we'll get some more updates on that shortly, and please stay tuned and check the city website often for information. And as soon as your number comes up for vaccination, please get vaccinated. We really need people to get vaccinated. Any other council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda? Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, sorry about that. Had a little bit of a problem getting on here. Happy New Year. I did have one item that has really, I was trying to figure out a way to get out there and it seemed to be the best, the best way. It's been a long slog through the pandemic, and I do appreciate all of the efforts that staff and the council and our citizens and our first responders and everybody who has had something to do with trying to keep our city going over the course of the last nine months, 10, I guess, almost. Hats off. Sometimes I think it's worth taking some stock and not to pat ourselves on the back necessarily, although I pat all of you on the back and the people I mentioned, all of them. But I do think we all as a society have been under enormous pressure and uncertainty and dealing with things that we haven't before. And all at once, the people who are staying home with their kids and having to educate them when they weren't really trained or equipped to do that. The teachers who are trying to do it in school that didn't have that that background until now, I think are doing the best they can. And I, I think that there is unfortunately a tendency in our federal system, our federal system of federalism, which includes, you know, on the one hand, the federal government and the state government, and then the local governments like we are. The higher up you go, sometimes the more demands you place by your decisions and indecisions on those below you. And I do think that our city government has had demands placed on it that are substantial without the resources necessary to deal with them. We're going to be allocating taxpayer resources tonight, perhaps, depending on what we choose, and that comes from all of you, and we all on this council to a person and all the people and staff care very deeply about that and appreciate the trust that you have in us in allocating that and making decisions on it. And it's important that you know that and that your input, whether it's calls, emails, texts, showing up at meetings, showing up on volunteer boards and stuff, all very important to what we do. But nonetheless, we often end up at the bottom of the hill in terms of when we get information, we're often the last to know. When we get good information, which we often have to dig for really hard and with very little resources and a lot of accountability. And I'm not suggesting, and I don't think anybody else on the council would suggest that this is, you know, poor me. It isn't poor me. I actually like this, believe it or not. This is challenging and it's important work. And as I tell people and have, you know, the moment you pull out of your garage in Lewisville and are onto the street, or you get to Lewisville to work or operate a business, you're ours in the sense of we have a responsibility to make good decisions by you. And we're trying to do that. We're not always successful. And we make mistakes and we try to fix them, but we're about good government. And I think that, I, I hope you who are out there know that that's where the heart of each of these people who are on your screen and those who come to work every day on your behalf are, and I suspect that's hopefully where you want us to be. I, I think I've heard people say this, and I haven't maybe given enough credence to it. But I think in our own discussions, in your discussions with us and our discussions with the staff, it's important to show kindness. And it's, we don't talk very often about, I don't talk very often about, I'm falling short of that all the time. But I think that in what we do, it's challenging enough that I think a little rule of kindness, and I'll try to do this myself, before we speak, before we act, probably is going to go a long way to make the decisions that we make good for the city of Lewisville and good for one another and a better experience for it. It doesn't mean it's going to always be that way. It doesn't mean we don't disagree. We're going to have plenty of disagreements and that's all good. But I think a little bit kindness goes a long way. So that's my item off of each other.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Any other council members with pertinent comments on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's been a busy start to the new year at the city, particularly with regard to COVID-19 response. So I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on some of the comments that the mayor made. But to begin with, as of January 4th, Boulder County is in Level Orange, high risk on the state's COVID-19 dial and is subject to restrictions, including gatherings up to 10 from no more than two households. Indoor dining is now 25% capacity or up to 50 people. Outdoor dining is six feet between parties. Offices are 25% capacity with remote work strongly encouraged. Gyms are 25% capacity or up to 50 people. Details about Level Orange and the county's COVID-19 data and metrics can be found on the Boulder County Public Health website. City services and facilities are being adjusted to meet the Level Orange operational requirements. The Recreation Center has expanded capacity to reflect the Level Orange guidelines. We are currently in the process of updating the city's Level Orange reopening plan to reflect other facility changes that will take place starting next week. Changes will include City Hall reopening by appointment during limited times, the library reopening for limited browsing pickup in the lobby, and police court reopening by appointment and/or limited walk-in hours. So the city has provided updated information and signage to local restaurants to reflect the new guidelines as well. As it relates to the Boulder County vaccine distribution, consistent with the mayor's comments as well, the city is working closely with Boulder County Public Health as they develop their vaccine, vaccination distribution plan for the county. Last week, the state updated the vaccine distribution plan, which reflects three phases for getting Coloradoans vaccinated. Currently, Boulder County is vaccinating individuals in 1A and 1B, which includes police officers. Lewisville Police Department staff received their first vaccines last week. The 1B category also now includes people 70 and older, and the city will work with Boulder County Public Health to support distribution to this important segment of our community. At this time, we don't have a complete understanding of how or exactly when these vaccines will be rolled out. This depends on the availability of the vaccine and the completion of the 1A category. We are providing regular updates internally, and once we have information regarding broader community availability, we'll provide that information through regular city communication channels, our e-news blast, the website, and targeted outreach to any specific populations that might be impacted. Next, I'd just like to turn it over briefly to Megan Pierce to give you a brief update on the statewide small business assistance grants. Megan?
Thank you, Heather. Just a brief update on the Small Business COVID-19 Grant Relief Program. This is a result of Senate Bill 20B001, the grant program being administered by the Department of Local Affairs through each county in Colorado. So staff has been participating with the Boulder County effort, and I'm pleased to announce that we anticipate those applications opening this Friday, January 8th. The statute requires that those applications are open for a three-week period, so it's anticipated that applications would close on January 29th, and it's required that the funding is dispersed by February 12th. To assist in this effort, Boulder County has contracted with Colorado Enterprise Fund, which was the group responsible for administering the Energize Colorado grants earlier in 2020. So they have good experience in doing this, and it has enabled the county to be more nimble and responsive to get these grant applications open as soon as possible. Just to note that the legislation specifically limits these grant applications to restaurants, bars, which includes breweries, wineries, and distilleries, caterers, movie theaters, and gyms and recreation centers. So it's a pretty limited population. As I said, I've been participating on the team developing this and will continue to be involved in determining how these grants are dispersed, you know, equitably through Boulder County, since we all have businesses that are certainly interested and eligible for this program. But I anticipate that we'll be, we'll be hearing more in the next few weeks about those applications, and at a maximum, grants would be awarded up to $7,000. So happy to answer any questions about that grant program.
Thank you very much, City Manager Balsor and Megan Pierce. That takes us to our regular business this evening. And our first item of regular business is Resolution Number Three, Series 2021, a resolution approving a small business preservation grant program. We'll have a staff presentation and then public comments, and then council questions and comments, and take action. Director Pierce?
Sure, give me just a second. I'm going to share my screen with you for tonight's presentation. So, good evening, happy to be presenting about the resolution for approving a small business preservation grant program. This item has been pretty extensively discussed with the Economic Vitality Committee, so we're really bringing this forward as a, as a packaged recommendation. Just a brief history, there's more in the packet for those that are interested, but we, to date, we've had two grant programs, including the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, as well as the Recovery and Improvement Matching Grant Program, which is still going on today. We're actively still getting applications for that one. We've also had extensive efforts in communications and marketing. We've offered two webinar series free to our local businesses, and our winter outdoor dining program is, is now in play. As things are always changing, this has changed since this presentation was, was contemplated, and since the Economic Vitality Committee last met in December to make this recommendation. We, we don't currently meet all of the metrics for Level Orange. We're pretty close in Boulder County, but since the governor's move, we are operating in Level Orange, so it has changed some of what's reflected on this slide. So restaurants can now offer indoor service at 25% capacity or 50 people per room, whichever is less. The limitations on last call have moved from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Bars are still substantively restricted in the same manner. As City Manager Balsor noted, gyms have increased to 25% or 50 people per room. Limited healthcare and personal services are still at the levels reflected on this slide. Their, their levels are, are the same between Level Red and Level Orange. I've already provided you an, an update on SB 20B001, and that is currently ongoing, so there are efforts to support some of these business types that are most in need. One item that I didn't mention in my update is that the Art Organization Grant Program that is open does prohibit a business from applying for the Small Business Relief Program. So there, the legislation did define those groups separately, so there is aid for art organizations and individuals, but that is separate and also precludes an individual or business from applying for the Small Business Relief Grants. Both, you know, federal agencies are looking for stopgap measures. The state of Colorado is doing the same thing, and that has helped to focus our efforts for targeted assistance. What, what's proposed in your materials and what I'll be reviewing for the remainder of the time is a targeted Small Business Preservation Grant Program. The EVC, through its discussion, discussed that there would be three business types eligible. So different from our prior grant programs, we would be more targeted in our efforts to those businesses that have experienced the most prolonged and restrictive capacity limitations. So we've classified those to match with the state's definitions. They're a little bit different in, in how we classify and license businesses, but to, to give you the sense of, of how many businesses we're talking about locally. Restaurants and bars are licensed as eating and drinking places. We have 78 licenses in that category that, that would be eligible. Gyms and fitness users fall under two of our licensing categories. These had to be refined substantially to match the state's definition of gym and fitness users. So numbers 73 and 76 are actually larger categories within licensing, but in total, we would have 16 business types that would be a match and, and eligible. And then the limited health services falls under our category 74, and also to match this to the state's definition, the way I think about it is that this does not include medical doctors. It includes other practitioners who provide medical-type services, such as physical therapy and chiropractic services. The Economic Vitality Committee proposes grants of $5,000, which is what we did with our Emergency Solutions Grant Program. In order to break a tie for funding, staff recommends using the order in which applications are received. And, and part of that process here is that restaurants and bars would be funded first, gyms and fitness users funded second, limited health services providers funded third. So that's, we would, we would do all restaurants and bars and then move to the next pile and then move to the third pile. In terms of eligibility, much of this will also sound familiar from the Emergency Solutions Grant Program because the effort is to make this targeted and efficient so that we can have funds to these businesses well before the DOLA grant program is going to have funds available. I think it's, it's critical to be thinking about people making payroll and making rent in January, given the restrictions they've had for the last several months. So they would be licensed brick and mortar businesses in Lewisville in operation as of March 10th, which was the date of the emergency declaration. Business is currently open to the public and not voluntarily closed, and, and how I interpret that is, is a restaurant, you know, prior to our move to Level Orange, could have been closed to indoor seating but still open, providing takeout services. So they're doing something to be active and, and open. The business would need to be current on city accounts as of date of application, and, and here's a slight change that the EVC recommends from what we previously used as our checkpoint, is that current would be considered if a person, if a business has a payment plan with the city, but they are current on the payment plan. So in the previous grant program, we did exclude businesses that had an existing payment plan, even if they were current in those payment schedules. The last item here is submit a complete and signed application. There would be a number of acknowledgements similar to our prior grant applications, and the EVC also recommends including an attestation that the business has experienced financial hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic. These are factors that we talked about as, as a committee, but we're not recommending for inclusion. So one of the items that, that we did include in our first grant program last year was restricting the number of employees, and that ended up being a confusing point on the application for some businesses, and it did also exclude some businesses because they were right on the cusp of that calculation. And the recommendation here is that we're severely limiting the types of businesses that can, can apply, and none of those are large employers. They are not our primary employers that have 150 employees working in Lewisville. These are what you would traditionally think about as small businesses generally, even if they might have, you know, 25 or 26 employees. So we didn't want to make a hard distinction that might exclude some of the business types we're really trying to assist. The other item is that we made sure to specifically discuss that being a prior grant recipient would not exclude a business from applying for this third grant program. So we do have several businesses that have received both an Emergency Solutions Grant as well as a Recovery and Improvement Matching Grant. And the thought behind this is that, you know, receiving funds from the city possibly last April doesn't mean that a business has not been working diligently to stay open and stay in operation, but maybe still struggling because, you know, now we're in a new year and we've still been under significant restrictions for the last several months. Funding and timing, the EVC recommends a total program of $500,000. This would allow at $5,000 each, 100 grants to be approved. Comparably, when we did the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, we had $350,000 total. So we did 70 grants in, in that vein. How the resolution that's before you tonight is written is that we would also plan to present this grant program to the Lewisville Revitalization Commission in hopes of their participation. And their participation would be limited to businesses within the Highway 42 urban renewal area. That's very similar to our first grant program last year, but their participation would lower the amount of the city's contribution. So the city would agree to $500,000, but that would be lessened by any amount that the LRC agreed to contribute to the program. So it's hoped that the LRC might be willing to participate in, in $150,000 of funding. If that's the case, then the general fund would be responsible for $350,000. In terms of timing, if, if this is approved tonight, I'm prepared to start promoting the program tomorrow. I'd like to have a few days to make businesses aware that the program is, is starting and who's going to be eligible, but also would like to have the conversation with the Revitalization Commission at their regular scheduled meeting next week to determine the total amount of funding and make sure that I know when applications go out, if we need to sort them between who's in the urban renewal area and who is not. Again, our goal is that applicants could receive funding in January, and realistically, if they read the application and they meet the eligibility requirements, they sort of know if, if they're going to be eligible to, to get those checks. The other component we spoke about at Economic Vitality Committee, there were a number of, of ideas and things we could pursue in terms of business support. We focused on the grant program as an immediate form of relief, and a second form of relief that we could choose to pursue that's similar to legislation that, that came out of the special session is providing liquor license fee relief. So waiving liquor license fees in 2021, this is looking at specifically 51 license holders would be a little over $6,100. This would apply primarily to restaurants and hotel license owners, not retail liquor license holders. So those businesses, the retail licenses have not been restricted in capacity the same way that, that restaurants and, you know, hotels have had to grapple with, with the pandemic impacts. So we suggest making it targeted to the, to the business types most impacted. If council wants to pursue this item, staff would bring back that specific item for adoption at a subsequent meeting. As mentioned, we talked about a number of things that Economic Vitality Committee, I think those conversations will continue to occur. My philosophy is that we want to, you know, respond timely and make considerations that are targeted, and, and that is what we hope to bring forward tonight. There are other items such as a COVID supply program, considering delivery fee caps or a delivery service program, doing gift cards, providing subsidies for sustainable takeout wear or sales tax or utility relief that the city could also undertake at a later date. And the recommendation is to approve the resolution to launch the Small Business Preservation Grant Program, and staff also seeks guidance about whether we should bring back liquor license fee waivers at a subsequent meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any council members have questions for Director Pierce? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to thank you for your presentation. I think you captured a discussion we had at the EVC meeting back in December. The, the one question I have, I guess I, I'd like you just to describe just a little more, so we all are starting from the same place. The one thing, we're talking about businesses not voluntarily closed. How will you make that determination? And I, I'm asking this question just so we can give, get a level setting for everybody who's on this or at this meeting.
Sure, I would just envision making that an attestation on the application and trusting that the business is making an honest application. It's just a good faith question that, that someone is making those efforts to continue providing service, and these fees would be helping to sustain them rather than a business that's been able to reduce their expenses by voluntarily closing.
Thank you.
Any other council members have questions? Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Director Pierce, I think like Protem said, I, I think you've presented it very well. I just, again, this is a level-setting question. You'd mentioned taxes, and I, I wanted to make sure that we are including an attestation relating to being in good stead on state and federal taxes as well. And frankly, from county, I mean, to the extent that there are property taxes that, that do anything. Can we make sure that those, or are, I wanted to ask at the, at the outset, are those part of that attestation as well?
Yes, similar to the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, we would include that in the attestation. We would do a manual check on the city side for both sales tax and utility, sales and use tax, as well as utility taxes and fees, and then we would check for a certificate of good standing with the Secretary of State. And then we would check for a certificate of good standing with the Secretary of State.
Okay, because I I'm uncomfortable with that as long as people are making an attestation. I think obviously, you know, it's nice to to trust but verify, but some, in some cases, it's difficult to do that. And, you know, folks are doing these under penalty of law. So I I appreciate that as a a really good proxy. Thanks.
Thank you. I I want to thank the EBC for working on this so quickly. I think, you know, some people have said, why do you have a vitality committee? I think this is the perfect example that with council, council members on the council committee focused on something, we can turn around a program in a short period of time that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do. So I'm I'm really thankful for the committee members for putting in extra work to get it done quickly. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Brown for putting this on our agenda. But I do have one question. And it's just logistical. So in your report, you talk about 100 grants and hoping to get them out in January. And I just recognize that there is a logistical piece of that that is not in the Economic Vitality Department, rather it's in the Finance Department. So that, you know, it requires 100 individual checks to be issued to vendors that are likely not in our system. It it it's it's more complicated than you might think. It's not like someone gets a checkbook out and writes 100 checks, although that's, you know, that's kind of a nice dream. We could maybe do it that way. So I wonder if it is actually reasonable to expect that these would be out in January or if maybe we should give ourselves a more realistic window to say that it is our aspiration to get them out quickly. But we recognize that our finance department is short-staffed. We're down staff members and that it's, you know, unfair to put unnecessary burden on them. So I just wonder if that was discussed and if instead of putting this hard deadline on January, if maybe we say our aspiration is to get them out as quickly as as reasonably possible. But of course, we have to follow our internal controls. And right now we are getting cyber attacks and phishing attempts every day. So we would hate for someone to use this grant program as an attempt to subvert the city's financial policies.
Sure, we we have discussed this internally. And I believe Director Watson is is on the call tonight. So it's very important that he and I have these conversations. His staff has been incredibly helpful and has actually given us a bit of a lead. Because of the targeted eligibility, we will actually contract some of our work on on the front end because we know it's it's a small group who's eligible. We also do have a number of these vendors in the system now because we've had them there before. But rest assured, we're not going to change our internal control processes in order to speed this up. It will take the time that it takes. I do agree that it, we should not put a hard deadline in the publications about when we will have the checks out. I think it's our aspiration that we will turn these around as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other council member questions? All right, that takes us to public comment on this agenda item. If you have any comments, go ahead and raise your hand at this time. And then when I call on you, please tell us your name and your address. And you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. Our first commenter this evening is Bryce. Bryce, you are unmuted, but we can't hear you. Bryce, can you, I see your speaker or your microphone moving now, but we still can't hear you. Can you try again? So Bryce, we will come back to you. City Clerk, is there a way for you to put up the number, the call-in number on the screen so Bryce could try calling in on his phone?
Yeah, we'll get that in just a moment.
All right, so we'll go on to the next commenter. And we will circle back to Bryce to try again. Sorry for the technical difficulty. Our next commenter is Mark Oberholzer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Mark Oberholzer. I live at 224 Hoover Avenue here in Louisville. I also own the building known as The Corner at 640 Main Street and also tilt pinball in that building. I'm the Chairman of Business Retention and Development Committee and the Vice President of the DBA here in town. And with all of those hats on, I want to support these this new grant program. I also want to say thank you for the grant programs that you've done before. The EBC, the Vitality Committee has done some great work and and it's impressive to see the speed that they've been able to get these things done. And as a businessperson, that's very welcomed. A couple of specific things on it. I think the removal of the FTE requirement is huge. I think that was just one of those unintended consequences of the last one. So I would encourage you to keep that out of there during your discussions. Also, the payment plan was one thing that was discussed. And I think it's important to keep that requirement out of there as well. If somebody's on a payment plan, they're making a good faith effort to get their debts paid. And, you know, they're not shirking their responsibilities. But the fact of the matter is they don't have the money, which is why they're on the payment plan. So to not give those people money doesn't make much sense to me. So I would encourage you to to keep that staff recommended aspect as well. One thing I don't know if it'll come up, but one of the criteria that gets discussed from time to time is trying to determine the degree to which somebody has been injured by COVID, whether it's profit, whether it's revenues and all kinds of things. That's not in the staff recommendation. But just in case that comes up, I just wanted to give a couple of comments on that. The state rule on that is 20%, I believe, loss in revenues. And I can tell you, as a business member who's been hit hard by this, if I was only down 20%, I would be doing cartwheels down Main Street. You know, we are down, you know, our profits are are negative these days. Our our revenues are down, you know, 80, 90%. So and I think most people that we're targeting are in that boat. But if you are to to talk about that, I think 20% doesn't really mean much. To back up on that, I think that the criteria as a whole is very difficult for Director Pierce to try to assess and try to put rules forth and that kind of thing. So I think overall, streamlining the process and keeping that rule out of there probably makes sense. But if you are to discuss it, I just wanted to give some some perspective on what those numbers really mean. So that's all I had tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Rick Crone.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Rick Crone, 746 West Fur Court, Louisville. I'm also President of the Downtown Business Association. First, I'd like to agree with Mark Oberheiser's comments on the simplified application process. I think that's very, very important, given that we are talking small businesses with limited resources. First of all, the DBA supports Resolution Number Three for the purposes of the staff report and was discussed and recommended by the EBC. I was on that EBC Zoom call, and I can tell you it was an extensive discussion of all of the key points. This is a good program. It is still needed, even with the recent improvements change created by Level Orange, which are still really quite restricted, especially on the restaurant sector. So I'm urging you to support it. I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the business community, specifically including downtown, but the entire town in this case. Also, since the future supportive liquor license fee waiver is going to be discussed a bit, I'd like to encourage you to approve that as well. It's a small amount of money, hugely symbolic, and I think would help those particular businesses. And also Megan had the further list of items that the EBC might be considering in the future. And I'd urge you to support those as well. Thank you very much. That was all my comments.
Thank you. So we'll circle back to Bryce. If I could get the city clerk to put our call-in number up on the screen to give Bryce a chance to try to call in by phone if possible, or just to try your speaker again. So we'll click on you, Bryce, to give you a chance through the computer again. And if that doesn't work, we have put a call-in number up on the screen or a few call-in numbers, including one of them that's a toll-free number. So Bryce, you are unmuted on our end again. And so go ahead and try talking.
Good evening.
Bryce, we can hear you.
Hi. Thanks for having me today. Um, thank you for the presentation. You know, again, I'm in the same predicament as the other business owners. I appreciate your hard work and diligence. I'm at 1030 East South Boulder Road. I rent the property known as Precision Porous. I'm a native kid to the area. My family's all native. And this is just really to voice my opinion towards the negative effects of COVID. It's not just me who's hurting. As you heard Mark saying, downtown, there would be doing head-over-heel cartwheels had they only been down 20%. I echo that here just because I'm paying more money for PPEs and closing more hours so that I can keep the community safe. Not really a fan of the PPE distribution. I think that the business owner would be better off using the money at their discretion. This means buying their own cleaning supplies, not waiting on other people. I know right now Boulder County has a program that has PPEs distributed to a certain few, which if it was up to, let's see, I think it was Lell here. He mentioned something about not being current with taxes. It just kind of ruins everything for optimism for small businesses. If we can't pay our taxes, how can we afford to stick around? And if we can't get grant money or some kind of assistance for having not paid taxes, how are we going to help support this great community that we're a part of? I am current now. However, when the first round of PPE came out, I was denied that because I wasn't current. Because being a solopreneur, it's very difficult to navigate the choppy waters of not only LOC, but also managing a location all by yourself. And so with the advancement of money, I could do a lot of good for my community on top of paying my people. The other thing that I'm opposed to right now is the liquor license, just because it doesn't apply to me, nor can I see it being a positive thing for myself. I understand why it is there. However, I also understand that the profits that are made from liquor are substantially higher than that of something of coffee and bread. And so I would urge against doing that. And I think that concludes my comments for now. Again, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment this evening on this agenda item? All right, that takes us back over for council questions and comments and discussion or proposed motions in action. Councilmember Brown?
You're muted, Co.
First one of the year.
You think?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor, by the way. I appreciate, I appreciate this discussion. I really appreciate the work that the EBC has done. The members of the EBC did really amazing work to get this done quickly. I really appreciate all the comments from the business community tonight. You know, it's it's clear that businesses are hurting and that, you know, the one of the best things that we can do is to to try to help to support them is provide these grand dollars. So I'm definitely in favor of this program. I will defer to some of my members of the EBC Committee in terms of making the motion. But I will definitely be supporting this. So thank you very much for for all the work that everyone has done.
Mayor Protamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody who's attended that's made comments. One of the things I want to note at the EBC meeting, we had a lot of comments. A lot of that helped formulate our recommendation of policy and enriched our discussion. And so I I do agree, that was a really good discussion. And I appreciate the work of my colleagues before that meeting and at the meeting, as well as staff. Director Pierce has been carrying this. And so that's something I think we need to acknowledge, the efforts, you know, when you you came last January, or I guess the end of December in 2019, that you didn't expect how busy you were going to be, Director Pierce. And I I want to acknowledge the work you've done and the success on none of these programs just because of the work that that you've done. I'm I'm ready to support this next generation grant program. It is time. It's targeted, and it's targeted at those businesses that are being hurt the greatest. I know there is all sorts of businesses all over town that are being hurt. But I believe this was being proposed, takes a step in the direction of having the greatest impact. And being able to do it quickly means we have to use some level of blunt force approach to this and and using the industries as have been delineated, I think makes perfect sense. Regarding the funding, I think this is important that it needs to get funded. So we, I know there's an LRC meeting or the Louisville Revitalization Committee. Next week we'll be meeting and we'll potentially add money to this. Whether to do it or not, we need to do this program. And I think we need to be funding at least the first three industry categories. So that's, that's the restaurants, it's the bars, and that's the gyms and and those things at a minimum. So I'm hoping that at the end of the day, we'll be funding about 350,000 from the general fund and 150,000 from the LRC. But if the LRC has some reason not to do that, I feel, I think it is so important that I think it needs to be done by the general fund. Regarding the liquor liquor license relief, as Rick noted in his comments, it's mostly symbolic. It's $6,000, but bars have been closed. And so I think we need to acknowledge that, and that's something that I support. Regarding the 20% calculation, we talked about that at EBC. And I appreciate Mark's comments tonight, very similar comments that he made at the EBC meeting. I don't know how to how to come up with something that can't be gamed or, you know, crazy math or whatever, you know, understanding the financial aspects of it. What we're looking for is those applicants to declare that they have financial loss and they have hardship. That's what we're looking for. So however that gets worded, we're looking for that acknowledgement. And that is a trust item because it's something that would be very, very difficult to to audit. But that's what we're looking for. This is trust. We're looking to help those that are in need. We know that there are some restaurants that are doing quite well because of this, because of their normal model or their their pivot for that. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Three, Series 2021.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, and there are still some more hands up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also just add my thanks to Director Pierce and to the EBC. They've done an incredible job getting this program put together, refining it so that it's really specifically helping the people who are in the most need. And that is the small businesses in town. And so I am also 100% in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, I appreciate you stealing my thunder. I think I think anyone on the committee was a little uncomfortable with all the compliments because you know how hard Director Pierce has worked. So, you know, we we definitely, obviously, all of us on all of our committees serve an important role. But, you know, one of the compliments we had to Megan at our EBC meeting is she had just, she'd really thought through a lot of the issues of the first, just really, really laser-fast grant the first time around. And there are a couple of pieces that I think could be fixed. And everything I could have even imagined, she served up on a platter, right? And it was just, I think, we still had to have a good conversation about all of it. But I don't, I don't know that we changed much of what she brought forward, even with all the comments from the public and from each other. So really fantastic. And and I want to echo Mayor Protam's comments on the LRC. We spent a lot of time talking about like the funding amount. And I I think, I think the 500 is the right amount. And so I'm really hopeful the LRC will step up and participate with us. And we can do this sort of together with the two different funds. But regardless, we know we'll have the 500. And so I think these are all, this is just fantastic. And and it's only one piece of a really big puzzle of survival, but I'm glad we're doing this one piece.
Thank you all for your comments this evening. I'm I'm really grateful for all the work that everyone has put into it. And I'm hopeful that Councilmember Lay and the Chairwoman Lexi, who's listening to the call tonight, will be able to take the feedback back about hoping that we have the support of the LRC on this program because it really would help the city tremendously. So hopefully they So hopefully they can do that and bring that forward to the group and bring back good news for us. But either way, we, we really need to do this. The only thing I'll add, on the other programs, I would just ask the EVC to go back and flesh them out further. You know, really think through whether they're just ceremonial or if they do something, you know, that really helps the business community and also think through the administrative side of it because we have placed a lot of additional requirements on all of our staff. And so if we, you know, some programs, like for example, a sales tax holiday, several people have proposed that. It's actually much more complicated than you might think because we have different sales taxes for different things. And the way our sales taxes have been passed, like maybe it would be straightforward to waive our general sales tax, but it's probably less straightforward to waive our open space sales tax or our historic preservation sales tax or our rec center sales tax. So then do you tell the businesses, and I'm just using this for example, an example, like then do you tell the businesses, no, you have to remit two tenths of a percent, but you don't have to remit 3%, but you do have to remit the one tenth of a percent. And so it becomes complicated. And then if someone becomes behind because they didn't understand the complication of the program, we would have been better off just estimating what the sales tax is, you know, that they would be remitted and doing another grant program. So that's why I'm very much in favor of the grant program. It's more straightforward. It's easier for people to understand. We won't tie people up with a bunch of calculation and paperwork. So anyway, I am, I'm encouraging the EVC to continue to think through what the next phases are, what the next steps are, but really think through those logistics and, you know, what it means to the business and also what it means to the city to administer the program. Any other comments on the future programs, just so we give clear direction to the group? Generally, an agreement from the group that the EVC will just continue to work on those and bring forward, you know, the, the good, bring forward the good ideas. Okay, thank you, everyone. Seeing no other hands raised or comments, I will ask the city clerk for a roll call on approving resolution number three, series 2021.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next item of business this evening, which is discussion direction on the five star certification program. We'll have a staff presentation from Director Pierce.
Yes, so this item has come up as, as we've all realized very quickly. There was an addendum distributed today with an updated PowerPoint. I'm happy to go through that or I'm happy to take questions based on the materials provided. What would be the preference?
I know Councilmember Lay had some comments and suggestions, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I've been puzzling or reading over this now. And the statement from CDPHE about the five star certification program. And I know that there is some information available about it, but there's a lot of information that nobody knows. And that's partly because it just came out. And I recognize that, you know, this is one where we've gotten some information from the state, but not an awful lot. And the county health department is going to help tell a tale about how the, whether they're going to be comfortable with it or not. And we, you know, it, it's a hard program even to, at this point, really evaluate very much. I think what I would say is that we've got, generally speaking, Louisville, you know, we've got two big values that we have said are incredibly important this year. And we've said it over and over again in a variety of ways. One is that we care very deeply, all of us, and that's businesses and, and council and the community in protecting citizens in this pandemic. And that's absolutely critical for all of us to do. It's the first really rule of government is that we're to protect the people we represent. And the second thing is that we need to support our businesses. Because as we've already talked about just a few moments ago, there is need for helping our businesses survive this pandemic. And because they are the backbone of our sales tax, they are our neighbors and they're our employers. And we really have an obligation to do what we can. And we've, I think, tried ever so more strategically to do that. And we're going to be doing that more on the EVC. I think you, Protem Maloney talked a little bit about the target. Well, everybody's talked about the targeting, but that's really important. But I think it's also important to, to support businesses by incentivizing behavior that we want to incentivize and making changes to physical plants are, is one of the things that we incentivize through another grant program. We want people to use PPE and that's part of the program we just approved. And so those things are all important. And generally speaking, I think it's important for us to be supportive of programs that, that serve those goals in the way that Louisville requires them. And balancing those two big issues is, is pretty critically important. So I, I don't think it's, it's very easy to support something that we have so little information about. But I think the community and businesses need to know that we are very supportive of efforts to try to financially support them and, and give benefits to those who are really going above and beyond the regulations guidelines we have. So from that standpoint, I, you know, the, I don't really need to know much more information about what we've got here. I think it's really important for us to keep an eye on this and to know what's going on and perhaps to have staff come back very soon and tell us. But I don't, you know, obviously they didn't come to us for a vote tonight because we don't have anything to vote on. And I'm not sure we need to take it much further. So that's, those are, generally speaking, what I, my comments about this particular item.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilor Lay. I, I have very similar comments, you know, we're balancing public health and safety with, you know, the, our businesses. And, you know, how do we, how do we do that? And that's a really, very difficult time. And we did just, just approve business assistance. And so it's the, you know, we've done a number of initiatives for businesses and we will continue to do that as the year goes on. But, you know, I think conceptually, the, the five star program is something that's important. And we need to find how it fits in Boulder County and how it might fit within Louisville. It's something that I think that we, as Councilor Lay said, we want to keep up the date on what's going on and the development of that. And one way to do that is really to engage in the administrative committee that was talked about in the staff report. So when I articulate a little, maybe a little deeper than my colleague, Councilor Lay, I think that we need to have staff that does participate with the administrative committee or whatever the other programs are that shape this so that it will be something that we believe we can support in the city of Louisville. So that's my comments. I, I view this as a, an information item on the agenda. I appreciate the staff bringing it forward. And I'm ready to, you know, however often, we need to have an update on this. I would like to see this on the agenda because I think it's conceptually something that will be important within Louisville when it gets more well-defined. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to public comments on this agenda item. If any members of the public care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions, comments, discussion. Any council members have any questions or comments or discussion? All right. So Councilmember Lay?
You know, the only thing I would say is I, I'm concerned about our staff's resources right now. We, we just approved a big program. I think that that, among other things, is going to take some time. I'm not sure personally that there's any particular need to devote staff to the administrative committee. I believe that's done, going to be done by, you know, applications. So yeah, through that, and, and it's not even necessarily the case that somebody's going to need to be, or the, the case that somebody is going to be even on the administrative committee. And I'm not really entirely sure whether, even if they did, that the, the use of the staff resources is correct. So I, I guess I have some reservation about that personally. I don't know how others feel about that, but I, it just seems to be we ought to kind of monitor it and, you know, actively not, not neglecting it. But I'm not sure we need anybody to that level. I guess that's my thought.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm tending to agree more with Councilman Lay that I think it's important for us to show interest in this program and, and gather more information about it. But to put any kind of staff resources toward it at this time, I think would be ill-advised. The staff is so overworked already on other issues like this new financial plan. So I would, I would encourage us to support the program in general, but, but collect information before we actually commit any staff time or resources to it.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I think I can get behind either direction. Obviously, if we don't have any at the table, then we don't influence the decisions that are being made at all. And so this, you know, committee is being formed and, you know, we will just be, if it's victims of it or beneficiaries of it, if we're not, if we're not stepping up to the table at all. But at the same time, yeah, it's, it's a county thing. And I, I don't, I think there'll be a lot of good people at the table and probably not necessary. So I mean, I would, obviously, staff is looking for some direction. So Mayor, maybe you can help us or how do you can help us with making sure we have given you enough or give you enough tonight? But I mean, my, my sense is you, you know, your staff. And so if you have someone who, who does have the time and the skill set to, to apply for that, that's great. And if you don't, I think that's fine. I think from my perspective, and maybe like to hear from my colleagues, it kind of sounds like we're mostly on the same boat. But if, if you feel more strongly, let me know. But, you know, I, I think we're okay either way. We're okay being represented or not, depending on if that works for your staff. And then I'd just say, yeah, in general, I, I like the concept of the five star program in that, you know, if I'm a business owner and I do something to protect my customers, I get treated differently than someone who does nothing to protect their customers. That we're all facing the same challenges. But if I spend money, when we gave people grant money to update their air filtration systems, right? So if they spend $5,000 upgrading their, their ventilation and their air and they put physical barriers in and everyone's wearing good PPE equipment, they've done all this stuff and they're not treated any differently than someone who's not doing any of that, or doing the bare minimum. That, that system's not set up really well to reward the people that are, that are protecting lives. So I think it's complicated. I don't know if it's going to work. I don't know how it's going to really, but that's the committee's job is to try to figure out how it works. And if it's, and if they can do it fast enough that it actually matters. I hope they can't. I hope this goes away so fast that the five star program doesn't really serve a purpose. But maybe there'll be a second pandemic sometime, five years from now, 10 years from now. And having these things in place for the future, really thinking about how to do this well, even with a really bad flu, things like that, I think, I think it's worth looking into. So I support it as much as the city of Louisville can support it right now. And I guess I'm looking for somebody else to kind of lead the recommendation or, or what I can agree to or make weaker or stronger.
Thank you. So not seeing any other hands at the moment. I'm supportive of Councilmember Lay's proposal to gather more information about the program at this time. I mean, we don't know whether public health supports this or not yet and whether they think that, you know, this is a good thing to do, given where we are. So I think getting that information and then understanding what the metrics that this committee is proposing, putting forward, are really important pieces of information for us before we can weigh in on whether we support it or not. Councilmember Dickinson, I mean, you brought up some things that, you know, I, I agree with. And I've been advocating for, for a long time of like improving filtration and doing it wisely. So if we do that, we need to make sure that we partner with a company that's capable of evaluating that. And I have some reservations about the direction that it appears to be going at the moment and putting our stamp of approval on a sole source contract when I can't get any information from the staff about the merits of the company that just came out of nowhere in March of 2020 to certify HVAC systems. It just causes me some great concern. And so I think, you know, when you say it's complicated, I, I totally agree. And so how we look, whether we support or don't support this, puts council in an awkward position. So I think Councilmember Lay really hit it on the head of saying, let's get some more information so that we can evaluate the merits or detriments of this and understand, does this actually help our businesses? Or does this just set them up so they have to pay some bully to be able to operate? You know what I mean? We need to know more because we want to make sure we set up a good deal for our businesses and that it's good for public health. So I need more information and I, I guess I'll just leave it at that. Councilmember Lay?
I had a question for perhaps Director Pierce or maybe the city, city manager. When is it that public health is likely to be weighing in on, on this program? Do we have any idea?
Sure. So I can, I can answer that to the extent that I know. So the administrative committee will meet for the first time on Thursday at 2:30 PM. Public Health will have a seat on that administrative committee. And it's anticipated that the application for the variants will probably come at the end of this week.
Okay.
They won't really start the, the process that, that they would, they would believe they have the support and at least the outlines of a program to pursue the variants to get started.
So, you know, at least presuming we, we get, we move in that sort of direction that we've been discussing here. Seems like we ought to get some feedback from you, you know, on, on news about that and kind of how things are shaping up in the next couple of weeks.
Right. If, if I don't, if we don't participate on the administrative committee, we'll, we'll rely a little bit more on, on what comes out from the committee. I do think they'll be providing regular updates because there will be, you know, a limitation on the number of people that can reasonably participate. They initially discussed having some subgroups in addition to the core administrative committee. So maybe there would be, you know, municipal representatives on the committee, but then a subgroup of municipal representatives that could meet to get the same information as the administrative committee. I'm not sure exactly how all that is going to fall out, but I think definitely we'll get updates based on what happens this week and then what their progress is next week. And if we don't serve on the committee, we'll just make sure to stay in the loop with what information is, is coming out.
Councilmember Dickinson, was that a hand raised? I saw a gesture. I wasn't sure. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Lay and also Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Maloney. I, I can definitely, I think that this issue is one that is, is worth continuing to, to look at. But I, it just doesn't seem quite ripe for us at this point to take action one way or the other on. So, you know, staying in, having our staff continuing to stay engaged and, and trying to influence the shaping of the program one way or the other seems, seems logical to me. But I'm not, I don't think that we're in a position at this point to really support a program that we really don't know much about at this point. support a program that we really don't know much about at this point.
All right. I don't see any other hands for comments or discussion. Any other comments on this agenda item this evening? All right. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year all. I have no report this evening.
Happy New Year to you. Nice to hear you. That takes us to Council of Comments Committee Reports and Identification of Future Agenda Items. Economic Vitality Committee. Have you guys been doing anything?
We, we just had a, we just had a two week break. I don't know what you're talking about. We really haven't been doing anything. We have our next meeting Friday, the 15th, I believe. So thank you.
Great. Finance Committee.
No update.
Utility Committee.
Utility Committee will have its first meeting of the year in early February.
Thank you. Colorado Communities for Climate Action.
Nothing really to report. We're just getting ready for the new legislative session.
Thank you. Commuting Solutions.
No report.
Consortium of Cities.
No report.
Downtown Business Association Street Fair.
It'd be a street fair committee met today. Obviously, there's a bit of uncertainty in terms of what might be our environment for next summer. So we've decided to start doing some more intense planning on developing scalable solutions or opportunities for street fair for next summer, based on whatever the regulatory environment, public health environment may be. So really, it's, it's pretty hard to do anything right now, but we're going to start looking at different scenarios.
Thank you. Keep at it. That is a really tricky place to be in. Denver Regional Council of Governments. We haven't met yet this year, but the federal stimulus package that passed included some highway funding that is not really COVID recovery funding, rather it is highway funding that follows the FAST Act. And the idea behind it was that in increasing funding for this type of project would be a form of stimulus to the economy and help, you know, states and cities that are in need of additional funds. So the about 36 million of that will flow to the Denver Regional Council of Governments region by formula. And then that will go to our projects. And each project owner will be asked if they can move projects up in the queue. So I've talked to staff. We have a few projects that have been funded, including Highway 42 Design, South Boulder Road improvements and our trail. Those are all pretty fast tracked as it is. So when they ask us, we probably won't have opportunity to move any faster since there are, they're all on track for this year anyway. But then, once they get through all the projects on the list, they go to the projects on the waitlist. And Marshall Underpass in Superior is one of the projects on the waitlist. So we can keep our fingers crossed that we get to that point with the funding, that it gets that far down the list. So the funding will flow through our normal process, which is the 20% allocation to regional projects and the 80% allocation to subregional projects. And our county, of course, gets a share of that 80%. So fingers crossed that we see some of that stimulus money. But in any case, our region will get $36 million, which is better than nothing. And CDOT also gets flexible funding that they have to spend around the state. And they didn't have to put match up for those dollars. So they really looked for projects that they have a hard time getting to with match and projects that don't really qualify for other federal programs. And so they're going to do noise wall maintenance with the other $9 million. And it doesn't sound that exciting, but it is something that CDOT gets a lot of citizen community complaint about, and it makes a big difference to the, to the sound in the communities that it affects and also to the visual appearance of the corridor. It just brings a different level and look. And some of the sound walls haven't been replaced since like the seventies or addressed. So it's not the most glamorous project, but it will make a big difference in the end. And it's one of those projects that they really have a hard time finding funding for. So that's good news as well. The next group is the Joint Interest Committee.
No report.
Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. And the only thing that we did was say goodbye to Commissioner Elise Jones. She served our committee very, very well, and we'll have a new commissioner in January. Metro Mayors Caucus. So the caucus has been meeting and talking about COVID updates very frequently. And one of the big concerns that we've all been talking about is the complication of the closure with Level Red. And whether or not the five star program, you know, is fair and, you know, doable really on a timeframe that's reasonable. So many of us from the caucus set up meetings with the governor's office to talk about, you know, what we could do to expedite getting the different businesses back open, what we would need to do from a public health and safety standpoint. And it really did feel like the governor listened to the mayors and moved to the counties that were in red to orange to be able to allow the businesses to reopen without having to pay a ransom to reopen or anything like that. It just, we, we tried to make it simple to say, if you want our businesses to follow guidelines, tell us what they are and the businesses will do it for, you know, our, our businesses have been doing a good job following the rules. If we require them to wear masks, they're wearing masks by and large. I mean, please, I don't need 100 emails from people of the examples that that is not true. But by and large, they've been doing a good job. And, you know, if we've said the tables need to be six feet apart, they're six feet apart. If we've said that, you know, two sides of the tent need to be open, two sides of the tent are open. So we asked, you know, just make rules that apply to everyone and, and we can enforce them. So I do feel like their office listened and moved our community to orange faster than we would have been moved to orange. You know, several public health officials were pretty angry about that. So, you know, the governor gets it from both sides, but I do think he's trying to be responsive to the business community and care about public health. And it seems like the move to increase 70-year-olds' priority on vaccination was done in concert with the orange move to try to hopefully keep hospitalization as low as possible so that we don't breach hospital capacity. So we really do all need to help support the governor's vision to get people vaccinated and to really ensure that we can try to walk this tightrope where we balance the economy and public health and try to keep both of them as best as we possibly can. It's just a really hard, hard thing to do. So I'll, I'll keep you appraised of what we're doing at Metro Mayors. We're talking with the governor on Thursday again. And hopefully he has some good news for us and more plans on the vaccination rollout because we really could make a big difference for everyone if we can start really hitting big numbers for vaccination. We're not there yet, but we really could start to make a big difference. So I'm very hopeful. Revitalization Commission.
Just absolutely nothing going on there. Well, obviously, we've got a meeting next week at which we're going to be considering amounts to be provided, if at all, to this program and the new grant program. And I'm, you know, have the, the enviable, in my view, but distinction of being on the Economic Vitality Committee, as well as obviously the council and the LRC. So I'm hopeful that we'll get support from the LRC to, at the very least, fully fund that amount that we discussed earlier, but, but we can discuss in that committee meeting, or excuse me, in the commission meeting, how, how much we want to provide. And I hope it'll be at least what we're, what we talked about tonight. I think the other, the only other thing I think is, is just a package that of improvements that the LRC approved for the Rose Raven, the new cider Ian over in South, South Border Road. And I think that's going to be a really good, a wonderful boost, just the kind of thing that the LRC should be doing, in my view, to try to activate the shopping center over there. So anyway, those are a couple of things that are going on. And look forward to serving on that. I'm a new member, so I'm getting to know people and I think we're going to have a good year. And look forward to partnership with the city council on the issues that are coming before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Excel Energy Futures.
No report this time.
Thank you. Are there advanced agenda topics? Mayor Portem Maloney.
One of the things that I, I, I think you touched on it, Mayor, in some of your comments, and some of the colleagues in various points in tonight's meetings. Making sure everybody has the opportunity to get vaccines. Is right before I came into this meeting, I live in a community where a lot of the people are, you know, living in patio homes and they're, they're 60s, 70s and 80s. And so when there's, you know, things like health, you get the emails that go across the neighborhood. Well, one of them was about how to get a vaccine. If you're 70 over, here's the ways you could do that. And you know, that's a good thing for a community to do, but it's something I would like to see us from a city perspective ensure that we provide whatever resources or information so that we can get to that goal of what you talked about, Mayor, is ensuring everybody who wants a vaccine has access to a vaccine. So I don't know really exactly what I'm asking the, the, the city manager staff to do, but I certainly I, I want to put the opening out there. If there's something, there's policy on funding that we need to do from the council perspective, and it helps with that agenda, I'd like to know what that is. If that's making facilities available or funding an information resource or whatever it might be, I'm just offering it up as something I would like to discuss. So it's not a specific agenda item, but it is certainly something I hope that we can participate and serve our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll put a bookmark or some placeholder on that and, and try to work in some way to have a vaccination plan come to council. Or like you say, one of these topics that you bring up, we do have a update from public health in January. So perhaps we can pair the two together, or at least we could do some brainstorming around it with public health to see how we could augment or support what they're doing and try to really do the best we can collaboratively. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, just, just to echo a little bit or, or amplify Councilor Portem's comments about that. I, I think maybe more specifically, when we do get to the point of, of that issue being ripe for, for discussion, I think efforts that we might consider making in transportation to the extent that we could be helpful there, efforts at providing building space, I think can be helpful. I think messaging are, are all things that I'd love to see some staff discussion on. Obviously, transportation is something that, that others are more likely to provide more help on that. But I think to the extent that we can be helpful, I think we should think bigger in terms of being a community that does as much as necessary to help our seniors, particularly, who are more likely to have transportation challenges in this and to have them soon rather than later. And, you know, I, I think we need to put our money where our mouth is when we talk about supporting the health of our, of our citizens. So I, I hope staff will start down that road. I think they are. And not simply look for guidance from public health, but start pushing both to ask questions about that and to, to move forward. I think another thing about that is there's a lot of people in the community that are going to want to help. And to the extent that we can involve volunteers and help, if not incorporate them, at least include some good information on our website and so forth, or maybe even in a, in one of the utility mailings, I, I think we should really do this. I, I worry about in Councilmember Dickinson knows the right word for this, but the kind of reticence to vaccinate. You know, the Councilmember Dickinson, what is that word? Do you know?
Vaccine hesitancy.
Yes, that, that, that is something we hear a lot about. And to the extent that we can be doing, even to the extent that council members can be proactive in talking to people and send it, I mean, I, I think trying to encourage people is a really good thing because we all know that there are instances in employment, otherwise, where you can require people to get vaccinated as a condition of, of certain kinds of benefits or continued employment, et cetera. But, you know, the best thing for people is to do this voluntarily, and there's a lot of ways to do that. So anything, I, I just amplify that. I, I know we're not really dealing with this. I'm probably kind of pushing it a little bit, but all of these things are things that I would like staff to be aware of. And when we start talking about this, I'd like, I'd like them to have asked those questions and get us information so we can jump on it when we need to.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mayor Portem Maloney, for bringing up this issue. I think it's a really important issue. And we, you know, the vaccination campaign, this is going to be an unprecedented vaccination campaign, really in the history of our country. I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Lay for, for his comments. I, I think that obviously the state health department and our county public health department are going to be in the lead on this, but there are absolutely ways that we as a city can, can augment the resources that they provide. Public health is chronically underfunded in this country, even in the middle of a pandemic. And we can provide resources either in, in any number of ways. And so, you know, I'm, I am happy to lend my, to my voice, my support and any expertise or assistance in, in that effort and thinking about how Louisville can really make sure that every one of our citizens who wants a vaccine has access to that. So thank you to both Mayor Portem Maloney and Councilmember Lay for, for, for bringing that up. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I thought I saw another hand, but it is not there. So if no one else has any other comments, this is your last chance. All right. Seeing no other comments, our meeting is adjourned. See you in a week or so. Good night, everyone.